I'll call the March meeting of the area planning commission to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Ryan Baker.
President.
Kevin Beaver.
Here.
Deborah Carter.
Here.
James Christman.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Mark Klinkenbeard. John Colette. Norm Froderman.
Here.
Don Folt.
Here.
John Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Maurer.
Here.
Debbie May.
Here.
Amanda Thompson.
Here.
William Verdine.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Could I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting as well as the status report. Are there any corrections on that?
Motion for a motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have any public comments that you're aware of?
We do have something under letter J.
Yeah, I'm not there yet.
Okay.
I'm on G.
That's fine, no.
I do need your help to keep me straightened out, but I'm not there yet.
I'll do my best.
No other, no other non-agenda items?
Correct.
That you're aware of?
Correct.
Okay. Executive Director's report back at you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I have a handful of things here this evening, and I'll just kind of run down my checklist. First off, reminder, next month, April 9th, is the meeting date. Move back one week to accommodate the Vigo County School Corporation's spring break. Also, we have handed out in front of you this evening our 2024 annual reports. We hand these out rather than mail them, simply because it's cost prohibitive to try and put them through the mail. So, no action is expected on that this evening. We'll give you a month to review, and then we'll ask for approval next month. The next item is, if you would, please disregard the first two paragraphs in my director's report this evening. As you know, we started off the effort to replace Devon with 60 original applicants. We narrowed that field to the top nine, two of whom already had jobs. So, we conducted seven interviews. We then offered to our top candidate to decline the position due to low pay. We made a second offer, who accepted initially, and then declined the position due to low pay. And then we made a third offer to a candidate who declined the position because of low pay. So, we are back in the hunt again. We have reposted the position, and hopefully we'll have some future updates for you there.
Okay.
So, letter J?
You jumped right past it?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
We don't need to.
Yeah, there's.
Any questions for the director or assistant director? Does not mean a motion on their reports. Motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. No plan committee reports, and we do have a communication received letter from redevelopment commission.
Yeah, the redevelopment commission provided this to our office, along with some other areas offices. It's simply a public notice of things that they've been doing that we've already heard about. All of this activity has already taken place in a meeting that happened prior to ours. So, all we really need to do with this is acknowledge it and acknowledge that we have received it, and that we have the opportunity to provide remonstrance to anything that's on their agenda that has already been approved as a parting of a meeting that's already occurred.
So, do you need official action on it?
We just need to acknowledge receipt, and then if...
Which you did, it looks like.
Yes, and then if there is remonstrance, we will be happy to provide that to them on your behalf.
Okay. Does anybody on the planning commission have any questions regarding this issue? That I don't think we need further action.
Correct.
Okay, the department already responded. Looks like, yeah. Okay. Okay, so I think we can move on to agenda items. The first item under new business, city rezonings, docket number 11, special ordinance number five, 2025, 500, 502, 504 Barton Avenue, from an R2PD to a C1PD, neighborhood commerce plan development.
No, I know.
Before she gives you the full report, my, good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with law firm, Bright Shagley &amp; Lowry. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, and I would ask this be tabled to the April meeting, if that's okay?
Do you have a motion to be... So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item under new business subdivisions, major primary secondary docket number four, file number one, 2025, R&amp;B Thomas Estates.
So, the property is located deep on a private drive. The drive has a common confluence with McDaniel Road and Eaton Drive. It's one new lot of .85 acres, surveyor's Mr. Little. The applicant is requesting to subdivide .85 acres to separate the existing residential dwelling from the surrounding acreage. Health department has approved. Public water is not available. Public sewer is not available. It's not a flood zone. The lot does exceed the minimum lot size requirement. For the street specifications, construction details are not available on the private drive. So, the parent tract has reached the max number of divisions still available for a minor subdivision, the limit being four. It has exceeded the number of homes permitted along a private drive. A subdivision in which the access requirements of section 610311A3 is satisfied by a private road that meets neither, the public street standards may be developed so long as not more than three lots have been created out of that same tract. In order for the drive to persist, the petitioner must demonstrate to the reasonable satisfaction of the planning commission that private roads will be properly maintained. No plan has yet been submitted thus far. The area planning commission at its discretion may waive the requirements that the applicant complete and dedicate roads, or waive the requirements for bonding and paving on rural residential subdivisions consisting of 12 lots or less. Said private roads shall be constructed to meet the geometric standards as set forth in the ordinance, except paving requirements. No relief from this section has been sought. All private roads and accessways shall be designed and constructed to facilitate the safe and convenient movement of motor vehicles and pedestrian traffic. The provisions of the ordinance dealing with drainage, which is section 610312, shall determine the width of roads, use of curb and gutter, and paving specifications. All new streets, public or private, non-dedicated within a subdivision, shall be designated to meet the geometric standards as set forth elsewhere within the ordinance, and the construction of the streets shall equal or exceed the minimum requirements set forth therein. The approval of the plan is, of course, contingent upon it being recorded in 90 days. The addition of one new home should not overburden the local infrastructure. I believe we've had a change, and after talking to, I believe it was Mr. Little, I believe they have requested approval of the primary plat, but not the secondary plat, which will allow for, and Mr. Shagley, you have taken up the helm in creating the private drive agreement?
That's correct.
Maintenance agreement, as well as submitting at a later date the variance request to allow them to exceed the maximum number of lots on the private drive.
That's correct.
Okay, so they are seeking then this evening, primary plat approval, which will then provide up to two years for Mr. Shagley to complete his work and resubmit as a secondary subdivision.
Okay. Mr. Shagley.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the commission. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. As Richard said, kind of new into this matter, but I've gotten some good instructions from the area plan office, and we believe we'll be able to get this resolved in the very near future. So, and I appreciate their assistance in this matter. I'd be happy to answer any questions, your man.
Any questions from anyone on the planning commission? Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Not, I'll entertain a motion. Sure.
So, what they're asking is for, for this to not meet the requirement of the number of residents.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is a rather large tract of property that's, has been owned by the same family for, I don't know how long. And over the course of decades, slowly, someone wanted to build a house, they let a family member build a house, and I think of the six homes out there, of the six potential homes, one is a non-family member, but they're related somehow. And they are just wanting to cut out one more piece for a lot for one of their kids to live on the property, and that's why we're all here, to allow for that sixth lot in the subdivision.
So, it already exceeds the number of homes for them to drive?
I don't know if that's...
They said less than six.
For the, for the, for the minor subdivision, I believe.
I think they're talking about the number of lots, Richard, for the major and minor, how many you can have with one tract to come out. Is what she doesn't maybe understand.
Okay. And I'm not too sure I can answer that question.
Well, tonight, I think, because you're just requesting primary, we're just, we're just simply creating a .85 acre lot in this parcel. There's no, they cannot develop without secondary approval. In order to do what they want to eventually do, they have to come back to us.
So, this only allows one home?
One more. It doesn't even allow home yet until they...
It just allows a lot.
Until they get the secondary approval. It just, it just simply creates a parcel that is a part of a parcel, and they can't do anything else until it comes back to us again.
Yeah.
Large acre parcel, and it's .85.
Yeah, it's just adding somewhere in the future for someone to build.
Right.
And that's all we're looking for?
That's all he's asking for at this point, yes.
Tonight, I'll be back for more. So, don't worry, I'll be back. It's my way of giving back, actually. Yes.
Any other questions? If there wasn't anybody here speaking in opposition, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item under new business subdivisions, docket number five, file number two, 2025, State Line.
The property has frontage along State Line Road commencing approximately 1,450 feet north of the intersection of State Line Road and Iliana Drive. Four new lots, three at 15 acres, one at 18.553 acres, surveyor's Mr. Bobble. The applicant is requesting to subdivide four new lots from Thunder State Sub for the proposed uses recreation and hunting. Health department review is still pending. Public sewer is not available. Public water is not available. This portion is not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. State Line is sufficiently constructed to handle additional traffic. Stormwater drainage will not be required with the minor subdivision. The approval of the plat is contingent upon it being recorded within 90 days. Staffs say of opinion that the proposed development will not overwhelm the existing infrastructure, and is therefore willing to offer the following recommendation: favorable where road cut permits are needed, they'll need, they'll need those from engineering, and then health department approval.
Okay. Is the petitioner present? Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. Any questions from anyone on the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? I'll entertain a motion.
Love to approve.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Next item under new business subdivisions, docket number six, file number three, 2025, Southern Acres West Two.
The property is bounded by Haythorne Avenue on the north, North 14th Street on the west, North 14th and a half Street on the east, and Clay Avenue on the south. It's .19 acres, just one lot, surveyor's Mr. Tolls. The request is to replat a portion of Southern Acres West and an adjoining property that was not planted as a portion of that sub to create one new lot for residential development. The health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is not currently available. This area elected not to connect to public water when it was made available. It's not in the flood zone. The lot does not exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Petitioners requested a variance from city code to reduce the minimum lot size requirement from the 10,000 square feet, and that was approved this morning. There are no new public proposed streets with this. The alley will remain dedicated to the public. City has permitted that alley being 15 feet in width and made of materials approved by city engineering. Stormwater drainage typically required with major subdivisions. Southern Acres West received secondary approval in February of 2024. The creation of one new lot should not overburden the plant or existing infrastructure at this location. Border zoning appeals relief from the minimum lot size requirement was applied for and approved. We offer favorable in the primary and secondary request of the following conditions where needed: drainage, erosion, control plan approval, bonding for infrastructure, record within 90 days. And one other thing I will add real quickly to this, we received a phone call from, I think maybe the person who owns the existing home, I don't quite recall, with concerns over a septic field extending onto the new lot. I forwarded them onto the health department for further investigation, thinking they may have record of it, but I did not hear anything back. So, I don't know whether that issue just got resolved and went away.
Okay.
Or whether that may still be pending. So, I would ask for primary and secondary approval pending health department review. I just need to touch base with them.
Okay. You listed in your conditions BCA approval for relief, which you said they got this morning.
And they got that this morning, yes.
Got you, okay. Anything you need to add, Caleb? You're good? Any questions from anyone on the planning commission?
As long as I understand, this won't be reapproved, it's pending one for the septic system, so if it affects this property, then...
Yes, that is correct. That's correct, yes.
But I thought the health department approved it, looked at all, I think, that's hard to...
They did initially, but this was prior to the adjoining property owner notifying us of a septic field conflict, or a potential septic field conflict.
Okay, I have a question. You told, why?
Oh, no, we, we got that phone call after the reports went out.
Something I might add from the city engineer's side is there is sanitary sewer available there, and you are required to connect the sewer if you're within 300 feet of it. So, if there is a septic field there, it would be illegal. I don't know if that changes how property lands go, but it shouldn't be in use, even if it is there.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, docket number seven, file number four, 2025,
The property is associated with a common address at 1250 Locust Street, 7.18 acres, 54 lots, surveyor's Mr. Tolls. The request is to subdivide the parent tract into 54 lots for residential development. The phases are further broken into six blocks. Health department has approved sanitary sewer is available. Extensions may be needed to reach interior lots. The application indicates roads will be dedicated to the public. Public water is available to portions at this time. Indiana American indicated that there is a future proposed main that is in need to provide water services to other portions of the development. It's not in a flood zone. Only lot one, which is the only lot, exceeds the minimum lot size requirement. Lots in this area generally run about the same size as the proposed lot sizes. However, the border zoning appeals relief for, from the minimum lot size requirement will be required. Stormwater drainage will be required with a major subdivision. So, this subdivision on the surface may appear familiar. A previous subdivision under the same name was submitted and approved but not recorded. The developer has since withdrawn the previous subdivision and has resubmitted under the same name with a new lot configuration. This time, there are 54 individual lots for single-family homes. Previously, there was a mix of two-family and single-family homes. The project appears to be split into two phases. The plat indicates the main school building will remain and is to retain the original zoning R2. The existing tract will be demolished. City engineering will have to review and approve the site plan. The plat indicates the roads are to be dedicated. Internal roads are planted at 40 and 50 feet wide. If the roads are to be dedicated, as indicated, city engineering will need to approve of the design and construction of those roads. Demolition of portions of the property has commenced. We do offer favorable in the primary and the secondary for both phases with the following needed prior to permitting: road cut, road cut permits from the city engineering, drainage and erosion control plan approval, bonding for infrastructure if needed, fire department approval, record within 90 days, review and approval of the road design and construction, completion of the water main extension, and border zoning appeals relief from the minimum lot size requirement for all but lot one.
Okay. Caleb?
Say if you've got any questions, I'll have to answer.
Anyone have any questions on the planning commission, Caleb, without you?
I guess, I question you, if there's a minimum lot size, is there a reason? Maybe they shouldn't have so many lots to apply for their size?
That's what the board of zoning appeals is for. They'll make a determination on whether they believe that, that this will not pass without the board of zoning appeals approving that variance. The reason there's a provision to apply for variance is because all can, all situations aren't the same. So, they will, they will have to come before the board of zoning appeals, and the board of zoning appeals will have to assess it and determine that it's okay or, or reject it, and then they'll have to come back, like you said, with more lots. We don't have jurisdiction over that.
We just, we state, approve your...
With, with, yeah, conditioned upon the next step. That's correct, yes.
Anyone else?
Motion to approve.
Do we have anybody speaking in opposition to this request? Not so, we've got a motion approved. Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Next item under new business subdivisions, docket number eight, file number five, 2025, replat of Plaza North Division Outlots.
So, the property is the site of the Plaza North Shopping Center and has a common address in 1950 Fort Harrison Road, 2.22 acres, three lots, surveyor's Mr. Betts. The request is to subdivide the parent tract, creating three new lots, one of which is already developed, one which is an expansion of an existing lot. Health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is available. It's not in the flood zone. Lots exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Stormwater drainage may be required with subdivision. The address for the owner is different on the plat than what is given in the application, so we'll need an accurate mailing address for legal notifications. The zoning and setbacks aren't depicted on the plat. All three lots are planted to the edge of the right-of-way. A frontage road does exist and should be utilized for access to Fort Harrison. Any new drive cuts will require city engineering approval. Approval of site plan and any new drainage plans for lot 5B will need prior, will be needed prior to permitting. So, we offered a favorable in the primary and secondary approval with the following conditions, and before I go further, I will say that there has been an amendment to the plat that was submitted to us, and I have looked at it and kind of understand it, but I will let, since we haven't had extensive time to review it, I'll let the petitioner speak to those revisions that were submitted just today.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Anthony Sires, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 530 East Ohio Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, speaking as to the changes we just resubmitted, very minor, but if you, if you're looking at the plan here, the owner of, this is an existing car wash, and currently, the driveway to the entrance of the car wash extends north and crosses over this existing parcel, the Mexican restaurant here actually owns this little panhandle, and he's made a deal with the restaurant owner to purchase this portion, little strip, 38 and a half by 153 feet. So, they're, they currently have a purchase agreement, so that's why we incorporated this change. It's still one, it's going to be just one overall lot for this development here, and then no changes to these other two proposed outlots.
Okay. Anything else you want to add to the...
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Love to approve.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item under new business subdivisions, docket number nine, file number six, 2025, Knobby Pine.
Petitioners requested this be tabled at this time.
So moved. Those in favor?
Aye.
Next item under new business county rezonings, docket number 10, UZO number four, 2025, 3001 West National Drive, from an RS to an M2 heavy industrial district.
So, the address is 3001 West National Drive. Property under Left Lane Transportation LLC has requested a rezoning from RS, single-family residential suburban, to M2 heavy industrial district for proposed use of a salvage yard. Now, the area is identified as suburban residential primarily. Surrounding uses are agricultural to the northwest and east, residential to the west The use as a salvage yard was commenced without permits and began to expand without state or local approvals. It was a collaboration between the area planning department, IDNR, to find a way to allow the continued use of this property as a salvage yard. The property is located in both AE and AE regulatory floodway. If the property is rezoned and utilized as a salvage yard, any waste, storage, or fuel tanks must be located in the AE fringe. They must be elevated and anchored. Semi-trailers will be required to be licensed and mobile. IDNR has stipulated that any one vehicle may not remain in the regulatory floodway for more than 30 days. Under the provisions of Indiana Code 1428-1, a permit for construction in the floodway from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources is required prior to the issuance of a local building permit or any excavation, deposit, construction, or obstruction activity located in the floodway. This includes land preparations activities such as filling, grading, clearing, and paving undertaken before the actual start of the structure. No action may be taken by the floodplain administrator until a permit or letter of authorization, where applicable, has been issued by IDNR granting approval for the construction in a floodway. There are currently two drive cuts. It's unknown which was existing and which is new. Road cut permits, design, and location must be approved by the appropriate jurisdiction. The public use areas are all dirt. Hard surfacing of all public use areas is required. State licensing for a salvage yard must be required, must be acquired. Screening of portions of the property is required. Sufficient onsite parking, including ADA stalls, must be provided. Large sections of the property are planted as rights of way. This is an impediment for full utilization of property and will prevent any future development. It's recommended that the owner vacate those areas that are planted streets and alleys. We're still going to offer a favorable recommendation on the proposed M2 rezoning request with the following conditions: must elevate and anchor any storage tanks and obtain an IOP permit. Must obtain any required permits, approvals from IDNR, Bureau of Motor Vehicles, NDOT, and Vigo County Engineering. A site plan must be submitted depicting adequate hard surface parking or a variance applied for through the county border zoning appeals. A landscaping buffer plan for screening must be submitted and approved, and the property and business owner must meet or exceed any stipulations and development standards as set forth by IDNR for activities, activities in a special flood hazard area.
Go ahead, if you've got something you want to add to what the staff report was.
Not really much. I mean, we've got plans to elevate the tanks, and surveyor is scheduled to come out, and I think it's base flood elevation plus two, if I remember right.
Right, yeah.
For the tanks, and to vacate the alleyways. They're supposed to come out and serve them out, and then, I don't remember his name, but I've got his packet to fill out and give to him for the vacation alleyways, and...
Okay.
About all I got.
Okay. Anyone on the planning commission have any questions?
Anyone put a screening on 40, right?
Sounds like it, yes.
Yeah, I'll put a screening on 40.
A fence?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's in the plans, yes.
Sure, yeah.
And the parking is going to be inside the fence, or...
Yes, yes.
Because there's not...
It'd be in the...
Park on 40, so...
It'd be in the south side of the, in front of the building.
Okay. Anyone?
This is a...
Yes.
But then, if, once, when you get somebody's license, and approve?
The trailers, and I'm going to say 90% of semis there right now are sold and will be leaving, but yes, everything, when, when stuff comes in, vehicle-wise, everything will be drained within a timely manner, seven days is what I have planned out, and put in the proper storage tanks, which will be elevated above the bus, base flood elevation.
And you're looking to expand what you have?
No, there is no new construction going on at all. We're just going to use the old building and go from there.
So, we will actually clean up?
Yes, yes, we have. Yes. We cleaned up out front and stuff already now, but we're going to continue to clean up, yes.[1780.73]
Has that line ever been tested, contaminated soil, software, everything? But it would be, but some of this is flagged as important to be bought in.
I could tell you that the EPA has been out there at least twice, and the EPA has been out there at least twice, and we're not able to find any contaminants in the soil. Brendan Kearns of the Vigo County Conservation District, he went out there and tested the water in the creek below after a rain and did not find any contaminants in the creek.
And I have a paper in my pocket from the EPA, if you'd like to see that, for their... A paper from the EPA that says they couldn't find nothing, if you guys would like to see that, too. Okay.
So we're talking about the possible drainage. Will you stop, how you going to stop receiving that day? After the rain? Like you got some control that you can give to that, right there?
Well, there is a berm in place as of right now. Yeah, it's just a soil berm, but like I said, I have a disassembling rack, if that's what you want to call it, and everything will be drained once it comes in, within seven days.
And that's in the area, it doesn't capture anything?
I have blueprints at the place now of a 10 by 20 concrete pad I'd like to pour at a later date, and for everything to control, and it'll be right next to the elevation of the tanks and everything go right into there. And then safety clean has already been contacted to come and pump out the oil whenever it is full, and all of that.
Do you want the three sets?
Yes, yes.
But with the berm, without water, you know, unless the soil is not pumped right, well, it's, uh, can't, they go back to that to see into the root of whatever...
Are you talking about metal-wise, or are you talking about oils and that stuff still?
Well, I understand you're, you're taking good care of it, and you're coming in.
Uh huh.
It's tough, you just can't see because I have to be from that area, you know?
Yep.
So that's why I'm certain about it.
I have...
And that's where we, drinking water, water, so that north-west area to the southeast draw a water well, so it's not, you know, forever. So, and now I know that's all wrong completely, but I, that's in the end, I accept that, you know? But it's still hard to believe, hard to see something out there. I was, that it's, you just...
Well, the plan for the metal, the small tin and all that, is eventually I have to get the permit through the DNR for, I'd like to pour a concrete pad underneath, and I've got the 2 by 5, I believe is the measurement, of the concrete blocks that the Jones and Sons pour, I believe. They're two foot wide, two foot tall, five foot long, and I was going to stack them up in a C kind of pattern. That way, every piece of tin was covered at least by three sides and on top of concrete. And then if there was potential of a flood, I would have extras to put in front of that so nothing could get out. And that would, it's going to be more of like a pyramid for both, on both sides of that, is my eventual plan for the permit.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Are you pursuing item permitting as well? I noticed they weren't on the list, but I think this would probably qualify for industrial stormwater permit, I think it's Rule 6.
Um, I...
Would answer a lot of their concerns, because it would require the stormwater leaving the site be clean.
I know item did not require any permits for that, and I have...
Personally, that's accurate, I still think that is.
Even though there's an industrial sick code for salvaging, because that's what they've told me.
They just do not have anything to do with it. I've called them and talked to them myself for regulations, and after talking to about 25 people, there are no regulations.
Interesting.
Yeah.
They leave it all up to the DNR?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have to have the DNR permit for the excavation fill and all that.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We got a motion? I think we have a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do you have a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That's all we got, one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Got one, second? Second, the motion approved? Yep, I do it. Those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.